Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, December 8th, 2014. I have a few announcements to make at the beginning of this meeting. First of all, we are having some technical difficulties for those of you who are watching at home. There is only one camera working today. It is the back room camera, and the entire meeting will be a wide shot of the Board of Commissioners. You won't be able to see our staff or the public speakers. You'll just be able to hear them, and it'll be one shot the whole time. Apologies. We'll have it fixed by the next meeting. Secondly, we will have Item E removed from the agenda at the request of the applicant, and that was the 205 Stratford Avenue subdivision matter. Thirdly, I would like to announce that we will be having a special meeting. It will be on Monday, December 22nd, at 4:00 PM in this room.
4:00?
4:00. It's Christmas week. And that the subject matter of that meeting will be the adoption of the millage ordinance that is introduced tonight. That's 10 days plus after the introduction. And my fourth announcement, I'm going to remind everyone about our five-minute rule. We have, as everyone knows, a soft five-minute rule. We ask everyone who comes up to speak at the podium to limit their comments to five minutes. It's not a hard rule, it's a soft rule. After five minutes, the chair will gently remind the speaker that it's been five minutes, and could you please wrap it up? And we ask that you respect that rule and wrap it up after five minutes. That rule has been adopted by six of the seven members of this commission as well. And I would like to explain and remind everyone why we have this rule. At our last meeting, we had, I was put in the position where I had to enforce this rule because somebody decided not to respect it. It was very uncomfortable for me, it was very uncomfortable for everyone watching. So, we ask that you respect it. It is a rule meant to promote fairness, to promote an efficient meeting, and to preclude meetings that go five hours and really hurt the democratic process. So, we ask that you respect it. The rule is not meant to stifle discussion, and it's meant so that everyone has a fair chance of giving their position. So, we would really appreciate it if you would all respect it, and we will respect it as well. Next, I would like to invite any public participation at the beginning of the meeting. Kathy?
I'll be real quick.
Leslie?
Hi. Leslie Morgan, 12 Farm Road. Just on the matter, Madam Chairman, that you mentioned, I would also like people to respect when I come up here and talk. I have 20 years in development experience in zoning and whatnot in different states. And I find that a lot of people interrupt me. And it's hard when you're here, and some of us are still nervous, expressing our ideas. When I get interrupted, personally, what it is for me is I lose my train of thought. And then I don't get my five minutes. And I am told that even when some people interrupt me and tell me I'm past my five minutes, I'm under even three minutes. But you can't, when you're speaking, and maybe it's for you, the same, you don't really know your time, okay? It's not like I'm watching stopwatch here, okay? So, I absolutely always try to stay under five minutes, but I think it's not fair when people interrupt me. And it might pertain to other people being interrupted. That being said, I want to quickly ask that we start talking about an issue that was brought up, I guess, one or two meetings ago, about the desire to add debt to put the trails in at Ardrossen. And I would just like to say at this point that I'd like everybody on the board to reread the executive summary that's still on the website. It was specifically said two times that you would not add debt for the trails, that they would be privately funded. I think the budget's about 600-some thousand, maybe it could be, you know, streamlined down. I know that we got 70 from the applicant, which is great. And what I would say is, let's get busy in telling the story, because a community rich like Radnor, similar to Chestnut Hill, can absolutely raise $600,000 for a good idea. And I firmly believe, and I've seen it time and again from Chester County to other counties, that good ideas get funded from wealthy communities. And we are certainly more wealthy than Chester County that does it time and again. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Leslie.
Dan Sherry, Wayne. Just for some clarification, the person who was cut off at the last meeting was me. And I would just like to put it in context, because President Schaefer talked about how uncomfortable it was for her to cut me off at the end of that meeting, by giving some examples of some things that apparently President Schaefer has no issue with. On October 13th, 2014, it was reported that Commissioner Bill Spingler said to a fellow board member, "I'll deck you right here." No admonishment from the chair. On November 10th, 2014, John Nagel hurled an obscenity at a speaker, namely me. No admonishment from the chair. On November 24th, 2014, John Nagel stated to a sitting commissioner on the dais, "Shut up." No admonishment from the chair. So, the fact that President Schaefer apparently gets the vapors over somebody going more than five minutes is, in my humble opinion, extremely inconsistent to the point of being laughable. But, I digress. The reason that I'd like to speak at the start of this meeting, and I'll also speak again at the end of this meeting, is because of the topic of executive sessions, which you will be talking about as soon as public comment ends. At the last meeting, a proposed order for CICD was discussed. And during that discussion, John Rice stated that this proposed order was devised in whole or in very material part during executive session. Immediately pounced on that, said, "Which of the exceptions under Radnor's charter did this board convene under?" Because Radnor's charter is very clear, you can only meet an executive session when one of four specific exceptions are met. Number one, matters of litigation to which the township is a party. Number two, personnel matters concerning any individual employee, prospective employee, or appointee. C, acquisition or disposition of land by the township. Finally, four, or D, I switch back and forth, developing strategy for labor negotiations or other negotiations to which the township is a party. In reaction, John Rice started mumbling about the Sunshine Act, and then stated something that was astonishing. I will quote it verbatim. "You're allowed to meet an executive session for things beyond what's in your charter. You've done that traditionally over the years." Shocking assertion. I, in turn, sent to this board, and also provided to the press, a nine-page letter where I detailed how the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act has got nothing to do with how this board convenes an executive session. All the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act is, is an outer layer, outer limit, rather. You can't go and meet an executive session for things not considered by the Sunshine Act. For example, if this board wanted to meet an executive session over whether John Nagel should be required to wear a tie to a Board of Commissioner meeting, you violated the Sunshine Act. But everything else, including whether you want to go into executive session, never is permitted under the Sunshine Act. And I included the specific language which states in the Sunshine Act as follows. "Nothing in this section or Section 707 relating to exceptions to open meetings shall be construed to require that any meeting be closed to the public, nor shall executive session be used as a subterfuge to defeat the purposes of Section 704 relating to open meetings." So, when this township has a charter that states you may only meet an executive session under four specific exceptions, that charter is consistent with the Sunshine Act. The Sunshine Act does not trumpet. As a result, John Rice, his assertion that you're allowed to meet outside the Sunshine Act has no credibility. It particularly lacks credibility because John Rice himself oversaw the Charter Review Committee. You all remember that. They met for a protracted period of time. They reviewed the charter line by line, and they did not modify or appeal that portion of the charter, not in any capacity whatsoever. However, for comparison, right after that particular section that I read you regarding the four exceptions, there was a repeal. There was a repeal of subsection E, rescinded, which states that subsection E Board Caucus was repealed, excuse me, January 7th, 2013, by ordinance number 201220. This ordinance was subject to referendum and was approved by a majority of the qualified voters on May 21st, 2013. That's how you nullify a portion in the charter. That's how everybody understands you nullify a portion in the charter. Not a sweeping declaration from the solicitor that you're allowed to go outside of it. As a result, members of this township now believe, now believe, now believe that anything in that charter is optional. As soon as you declare any portion of that charter to be separate and apart from an obligation that this Board of Commissioners must follow, the township is left with the understanding that anything, anything at all, is potentially permissible or potentially optional. So, I strongly hope, as I encouraged in my letter, that this board heavily questioned John Rice regarding that position, and understands the damage that such a position, when publicly uttered, takes in terms of how the public views how this board will meet behind the scenes. You don't want the public to be perceiving that game's already done. This was done in executive session. It doesn't matter if the charter forbids that. That's a horrible, horrible, and unnecessary step to take. You want to be instilling confidence in the public, not stating that this is the way that we handle ourselves. We don't follow what is, in effect, this township's constitution. I'll be back at the end of the meeting to talk about another issue involving John Rice, which was a recusal, and then apparently nine days later, an entry of appearance into the Dr. Donato appeal. But for now, I thank you for your time, and I urge you to take, again, your obligations regarding executive session very seriously under the charter.
Thank you. Is there any other public participation? Hello, Kathy?
I think the hat may be a giveaway of why I'm here. I want to thank members of the Public Works Department, and specifically Steve McNillis, the Recreation and Community Programming Staff, Laura Messalina, and Police Officer Mark Stunson and his compadre, I never did get his name, for assisting us with our-
Ray Mattis.
Was it?
It was Ray Mattis.
Was it Ray Mattis? Okay, I didn't catch up with him. For thanking them for helping us with our elves-for-the-shelves race on Saturday. It was a wonderful success. We also want to thank the EMT unit from the Radnor Fire Company for all of their help in making this a safe, even though it was a little glitchy, day for us. We want to thank our sponsors, who helped to make it a real financial success, our lead sponsor, Eagle Village Shops, our other lead sponsor, Mainline Print Shop, and our sponsors such as Mainline Neighbors, RMI Insurance, Mainline Land Rover and Jaguar, Anthony Colfire Pizza, Pit Supplies Plus, Velvet Shoestring, Pediatric Dentistry, Foot Orthodontics, M&amp;T Bank, Villanova University, Mangan Ernst &amp; Rankin, a division of Jenny Montgomery Scott, The Beer Yard, Hoteling Investment, the Radnor Town Education Association, Natalie Roslin and Trossini, Landscape Management, for all of their financial contributions that helped us pull this day off. Special thanks to Kathy Sonier, our library board member, who spent many, many hours in the last six months putting all of the details of this event together, and to all the library board members who staffed the event, found sponsors, and stuffed all those packets that we had for the day of the race. A huge shout-out to the 365 people who registered for our run and our walk. Brenmar Racing, who was doing the management of the Rice Forest, said it was the biggest first-time event they have seen in several years. So, we want to thank the 300 of you who, despite the rather odd weather, crossed the finish line, despite a few, as I said, glitches during the race itself. We are ecstatic about the way the township residents came forward, had a great time, ate us out of house and home afterwards, then brought over 200 children back at one hour later to decorate a gingerbread house and cookies. So, we thank you, we thank the township, we thank the residents, and we wish everyone a happy holiday.
Kathy, what are you doing with the signs?
They're supposed to all be picked up. So, I have to come to your house and pick yours.
Okay, I can bring it over.
If you see one, if anyone sees one that got away from us, because they kind of started moving around, like elves were moving them around, if you see one, pull it out of the ground, drop it off at the library, because we want to reuse them next year, if we probably will be doing this again, since it was such a huge success.
Well, I hope you do do it again. That was really a great event, and one of the most fun and festive 5Ks that I've ever participated in, so I encourage everyone to do it next year. It's really fun.
It really, really was. Everyone had a great time. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Is there any other public participation? Hello, Christina?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Christina Peroni, and I live in Wayne. I'd like to speak first about the issue of public comment. I would ask for this board to reconsider this soft rule. When people come up here, people have spent time preparing statements, researching information, and if it goes a little longer, it goes a little longer. I'll just remind you that years ago, I spent a lot of time doing a lot of research, and President at the time Hank Mahoney would let me speak. And as a result, he also let people answer questions, he also encouraged dialogue, he would let different people in the staff make comments, so we could get information out. As a result of that, we learned that millions of dollars was misappropriated, we learned that there were hidden contracts, we learned a lot of really bad things that were happening in this township. So, while it is messy and uncomfortable, it promotes democracy. So, I would speak to this issue of democracy, that it doesn't, it's not promoted by efficiency, democracy is promoted by dialogue. So, I would ask this board to reconsider, and I would also love to hear, who are the six members, six out of seven members, that agreed with having a soft five-minute rule versus letting the public speak? And people don't take advantage of it. I mean, if you think that my comments or other people, Mr. Sherry spends a lot of time doing research, as do other people. So, you know, just because it's contrary, if everybody got up here and just said for over five minutes how great you were, maybe you wouldn't stop them on the five-minute rule. I do appreciate your volunteer service, though, I must say that. Okay, speaking specifically about this executive session, I want to just remind people that I served on the Charter Review Committee. We spent hundreds of hours, I served on the committee with John Ake, Cheryl Tamola, Art Hertel, Steve Palantonio, John Johannis, Steve Chanonson, and Dorothy Orlikowsky. It was supported by many meetings with staff, with commissioners, with members of the public, who came out to speak about issues that needed to be revised in the charter. Sadly, Mr. Rice, which I believe are just, you know, just a gross misinterpretation, said that he can go and allow you guys to have executive session and talk about something as important as a land development deal, which is clearly not allowed in the charter. So, I would ask that some member of the board put on the agenda for the next meeting to discuss, how are we going to remedy this? How are we going to let the public learn what happened in an executive session? I was speaking with another member of the Charter Review Board, Ms. Dorothy Orlikowsky, who's also part of the League of Women Voters, is an executive on that board, who was appalled to hear about what happened. So, people heard, this is an important matter, it's never okay to have executive session when it's not called for, for the specific four reasons that were outlined. So, I would really ask that someone move forward and ask to have this discussion point put up at the next meeting, because you're allowed to do that now in the charter, only one member has to make that motion, and talk about, how is that information going to get out? How are we going to clean up this mess that unfortunately Mr. Rice put you guys in a very bad position by doing that? So, let's bring the sunshine and bring it out in the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. Is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment at this point? Okay, we'll move on. I'd like to announce that we had an executive session preceding this Board of Commissioners meeting on December 8th, 2014, at which all commissioners were present, and we discussed matters of personnel and litigation.
I'll move the approval and consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Actually, I'd like to take out-
I'll second it.
Item D.
All right, is there any other board, Commissioner, who would like to remove an item? Is there any member of the public who would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to pass the consent agenda absent Item D. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to nothing, and Item D is-
I'll move the approval of Resilience 2014-120, emergency replacement of boiler at Willow's Mansion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
I wanted some explanation on this. Obviously, we've entered into a lease agreement with a partner. I want to understand where the responsibility for the boiler falls, and if that is something that, in fact, the tenant would be responsible for once they're in the mansion.
Thank you, Commissioner. It is my understanding, Commissioner, that we are to provide the upcoming tenant with a building in good condition, which would be part of this boiler. Once they are in and everything's fully executed, this would then fall on to that group, but at this point in time, we're still responsible for the workings of the building.
So, again, and I apologize, I could have called you to ask you more details on this, but is the boiler defunct at this point? Is it working, not working?
It's a rather large boiler, probably about, almost the size of this day. It's 23 years old. It's actually got two burners, and, for lack of a better term, it's working at about 50% capacity. So, I spoke to the contractor, who's been maintaining that boiler for many years, and was wondering if we could do half. And he said that that's not feasible, we'd have to replace the entire unit, and that's where the price of $19,500 comes in. It's turnkey, they would remove the existing boiler, bring in the new boiler, make all the connections, make sure everything is up and running. It is 23 years old, it is quite a bit larger than today's boilers that can do the same amount, they're not as efficient, the old one was not as efficient. So, we did have an event there, a very successful event over the weekend, and the building was heated. The solarium is on its own, so that might fool a few people, but what is there now will not efficiently heat the entire structure when we start to get in the dead of winter.
And I imagine it was discussed whether this boiler could be repaired at this point, or is it beyond repair?
That is correct. The option is to just continue to run it as it is until it completely is no longer viable, or there is no repair, it is replacement at this time.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners, staff?
Well, I guess, yeah, Steve, so we're saying, I mean, obviously it could be repaired, you're saying that it would cost more to repair it than, and would not be as useful economically when repaired, as it would to replace the whole thing for $19,000.
I don't believe they can repair it at this point. So, if you know the inner workings of a boiler, I don't believe the parts are available and what has to be done at this point. And I, in my experience, I would say that to try to do so, we'd probably start to approximate this cost, and then we'd be left with a 23-year-old boiler that was repaired for quite a large amount of money.
Is it oil or gas?
I apologize, I cannot remember right now. Thank you.
The other thing that should be noted is that in the last 23 years, there have been a lot of advancements in technology efficiency, energy efficiency, with regard to heating units. So, I think even if this could be repaired, it would be a wise decision to replace it instead.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Any staff comments or questions? Any public comment?
Real quick, when does the lessor come in? I just forgot, I'm sorry. Could you just update us on the less-
It's not finalized yet. Bob, do you want to give the update?
Can you just update the-
The agreement's been finalized now, they're in the process of getting their financial commitment in place, so as soon as we have that, then the agreement starts to commence. So, that's why we couldn't have asked for the worst time for this boiler to go, so.
When do you expect them to close in the final?
Can you speak for the audience?
The question was, is when do they expect the financing to close? Our hope would be by the end of the year.
Okay, any other public comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes seven to nothing. Next, we will move to our committee reports, beginning with Personnel and Administration with Commissioner Fisher.
So, we have ordinance 2014-19, this is the introduction of the Cable Franchise Renewal Agreement, but I think, Commissioner Nagel, did you want to table this?
Well, rather than table it, I want to move that we send it to the Communications Council, have them review it at their next meeting, and get back to us with recommendations. My understanding is, one of the reasons we haven't been successful in negotiating a new contract is that Comcast has certainly not been willing to work with us. And based on those recommendations, we can determine whether we want to continue with Comcast, perhaps even having those negotiations here in front of the public. But for now, the motion is to send it to Communications Council.
I'll second that.
John Fisher, you seconded?
Yeah, I did.
Is there any other comment?
John Rice, do you think that that's a worthwhile endeavor? My understanding is that these things are so complex that sending it to, these things are, it needs expert input, not broad input.
It's a policy decision that the board can certainly make.
This, as I remember, John, the Citizens Communication Council also has special counsel that they can call on.
Well, I would-
We pay for, but-
Yeah, and I would not, I mean, I think that would be a separate request, if they want to send that on to somebody in DC. This has been going on for three or four years, it's bounced around. We got involved, Mary Everly from my office, who's worked with Comcast, finalized the agreement, there was a lot of language changes, it had to be tweaked. You know, I think it's worthwhile to get their comment, if the board wants to do that, but I would put a, some kind of a deadline on them. So, you know, they meet, they come back with something, and Comcast can participate in that. It's, this has been a long path to get here.
What is the history on, did it come from that committee and then came to you, and this is where we're at now, or, I mean, sending it back to them, maybe this isn't necessary?
I think it's been to the committee.
They have not seen, well, they have not commented on the final draft, and they do have comments on this final draft.
So, I think courtesy to them, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Is the main issue the amount of the payment, or is it a total payment, or is it an issue with the subscriber, or what's the main issues that-
With the Communication Council, I'm not, Rich, I have not had any communication with them recently.
I would recommend that we send it to them, get their comments, and really not negotiate the deal in public at this point in time, get their feedback, and then go from there. That'd be my recommendation at this time.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Any public comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes seven to nothing, and we will look forward to seeing that in, I guess, February, end of January or February. Next, we will move on to finance and audit, again with Commissioner Fisher.
I will move to adopt ordinance 2014-17, this is the adoption of the final comprehensive budget for 2015, version two, and establishing the real estate tax rate and the sanitary sewer rates.
Second.
And do we want, Bill, or Bob, would you like to make any comments on the final adoption?
Sure, if I may, one comment. Received last week, again, and I think this is representative of the Board of Commissioners, our Carfac group, the staff of the township, the Finance Department, and especially Bill White, the township was notified, again, of receiving for 2013, the Certificate of Achievement for Excellent in Financial Reporting, again. Again, that was something that I know, early on in my tenure here, that the first year of the Commissioners, pointed that we'd get that back. And again, that's something that, from this board, of what your oversight and what you have pushed on in the reporting. So, pleased to once again note that we have received that award with its- So pleased to once again note that we have received that award with its new tag and new certificate. So on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association, this is being awarded to Radnor Township again, on this behalf. So the Board of Commissioners present this to you on this, so.
And more importantly, thank you, staff and Bill, because we actually didn't do any work. You guys did all the work. Thank you for that hard work.
Really, that is an extraordinary honor, and they, our staff deserves it. They do a tremendous job of reporting our financing and everything that goes into it. If anyone who is interested gets on our website to poke around our finance section, it is a really incredible unprecedented amount of information that you can get online, everything, down to every check they write. Our checkbook is online. So it's been a really, a metamorphosis from what it was five years ago to this amount of transparency in our financial reporting and quality in our financial reporting. And we have our staff and our Carfac to thank for that. So, well deserved.
And I just want to reiterate that ordinance 2014-17 calls for a millage rate set at 3.7511 mils and a sewer service charge rate of $5.90 per thousand gallons of water used in the year of 2014. Is that right? It's based on the prior years?
Yeah, for the water usage, it's based on what Aqua provides us from the prior year.
Okay. So that is the, in essence, our 2015 budget and taxation rate. This does not include the potential increase for the open space purchase.
And so this is a 0% increase for this year in our millage, which is to be commended. Now, thank you, thank you, that's right. But next year, we could maybe go down, it would be even better. The, what's the increase though in the sewer fees? No?
No, there's no increase in the sewer fee.
No increase in that? Okay, I thought we said that there was, no?
We also didn't increase any fees.
Okay, are there any other comments?
This is a great, just to that point, no fees were increased, the sewer rate stays the same. And we don't really control the sewer expense, you know, because we're paying it out. But that rate does affect our capital fund in terms of doing sewer projects in the township. So at some point, we may have to revisit that because we have some issues coming up. So I will be supporting the ordinance.
Any other comments? Any staff comments? Any public comment? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the final comprehensive budget for 2015 is passed by a vote of seven to nothing.
Next, I'd like to move ordinance 2014-18, introduction, enacting the necessary real estate millage rate to fund the Electoral Open Space Bond for Ardrossan.
Second.
Any comment on this?
I'll just reiterate what I had stated at the last meeting. I ran for office twice now, and both times I promised the public and was elected on the fact that I would not raise debt, increase debt and increase debt service. And since I've taken office, and the only thing that has occurred is that the debt level has gone down dramatically, and the carrying cost of that debt has also gone down dramatically. So I will not be supporting this purchase. And just to reiterate that the millage increase is going to be 0.15 mils for 2015 to cover the debt service on the bond.
Just, I'd like to clarify, it's 0.15 mils. It is not covering the whole debt service. Most of the debt service, it will be paid out of our open space fund, which in turn is funded by our real estate transfer tax. But that funding, as we anticipated coming in, will not fully cover the debt payments. So there is a gap that we are covering with this .15 millage increase. If you want more information and more explanation, you can get on our website under the Ardrossan Project, read the executive summary and the document therein, and it explains the financing that we anticipate to put in place.
And so one question, I guess, do we have, we don't have bond counsel here. So this .15, Bill, .15 mils, suppose we need more than .15 mils, does this referendum or ordinance number 2014-18, does that provide for more than .15 mils in any given year?
Yeah, no, it's set at .15. The only way that would change is through an ordinance, an ordinance adopted by the Board. So it's .15 until the Board says it's something different.
So if there is a shortfall in the projections for transfer taxes, there could be a need for more than .15 mils to cover the debt service in future years. And to the extent that that is necessary, then that would be a budget overrun. Or, so that, how, that's what it would have to be, right?
Yeah, if there is a shortfall in the realty transfer tax and the .15 is no longer generating the revenue necessary to cover the debt service, yes, it'll have to come back in front of this Board on either raising the .15, or I guess the general fund could always pick up a piece of that. That's an option, although we're, this is electoral debt, I'm not sure that's the best way to go. But it would have to come back in front of this Board for a decision on how to correct it.
Right, because the bonds themselves are general obligation bonds. The full faith and credit of the township is pledged, not just the open space fund. All funds are pledged to repay these bonds. So to the extent the open space fund, for any reason, is short, this covers .15, but to the extent it's short and the .15 doesn't pick it up, then any other funds of the township would be necessary to fulfill the obligations to repay the principal and interest under the bonds that would be issued.
We got it. That is correct.
Conversely, if the open space fund is flush, and we have several very good years, we could always retract some of this millage if we wanted to. And in fact, in the year 2027, the old open space bonds that are still being paid off by that fund will expire, will have paid them all off, and there will be a lot more cash available, enough cash available under current projections to cover the whole debt payment. And in 2027, the Board sitting at that point can, and I would recommend, should, make the decision to take that .15 increase back.
Assuming that no other expenditures or budgetary items come into play, my point with this is that .15 is not a guarantee. .15 is just a projection at this point, and that it really is a general obligation of the township and that this is intended to cover it, but by no means is the sole source of cash pledged to repay these bonds.
Okay, is there any other comment?
Yes, I have a, I have a concern about, maybe it's similar to what Rich is saying. One of my concerns is what if we become flush? And one, I thought that the procedure we were following, Bob, was going, we were going to reevaluate this every year, and meaning that. Yeah, but we can, but we, but we won't unless somebody does it. I would like to set this millage and have it apply only to next year. And then next year, there has to be another vote on it, so that that millage that funds the gap goes up and down, depending upon what that gap is. One of the concerns that I have, and I thought it was being satisfied, but now I realize that it's not being satisfied, was that if, if we end up having ample cash, then this .15 millage just goes into the general fund and becomes a tax increase.
It doesn't.
Yes, it does, until it is overtly expressly changed by the Board. What I want it to do is daylight or stop, sunset, and then every year, we reevaluate. That's, that's the spirit of what I thought we were doing, and it's what.
The ordinance sets that additional millage for 2015. That's what it says. Let me set it next year. And then it comes back, you have a provision in your charter which requires a tax levy ordinance to be done as part of your budget, and you do that every year. So it's going to be back in front of you every year.
Yeah, but the issue is, this is going to be built into the, the way budgets work, we always take the last year and then you build off of it. This is going to become part of the base. It'll never go away. And Don, I think, is suggesting to make it explicit reauthorization every year. It would sunset every year.
Bill White, the way that this will be accounted for, this particular chunk of money will be deposited into the open space fund?
Yes.
Right, so it won't go into, it won't be in our general budget to build upon for next year. It will be in the open space fund. So it'll be separately accounted for.
And if I'm understanding Solicitor Rice correctly here, is that the millage itself, along with the general fund millage, will have to be renewed annually through an ordinance adopted by the Board? So as part of the projections.
So indefinitely, there will, as long as we are funding, I'm sorry for interrupting, Bill. Is that okay? It's just, I think, so as long as we are funding that purchase, we will have to have two votes to fund it. Meaning, just like we did this year, there was a vote on the general millage, and then there was a vote specifically dedicated to the millage for Ardrossan.
Yes, yeah. It could be done in two separate, probably should.
Well, it is two separate. We had a, correct?
It doesn't have to be two separate.
No, you can do it either way.
Because we can, we lump.
But I want it to be two separate.
I agree.
Yeah, and what I want to protect against is for people saying, we don't want it to be separate, so just add it to the other millage, and every year, it gets lost in the clutter. I don't want it to get lost in the clutter and the noise.
But it wouldn't be presented as a millage increase next year because it's a one-time increase.
No, it would be presented just like.
We still have to approve the millage every year.
We would be just approving the millage, no increase.
No, it's going to end up in the base, and we would never approve it again unless we specifically call for this to be reauthorized every year.
We set the millage rate every year, and we're setting the millage rate, it's no increase.
The Board next year will simply set the millage rate to include this within the general appropriation.
Fine, if anybody wants to change, that vote, you bring it up.
Well, actually, just hold on. This is a good topic, because the Charter requires that we have an ordinance to set the millage rate. It does not require that we have two ordinances to set millage rates. So technically, next year, we will set one millage rate that will include this increase to fund. We have an obligation to fund the government regardless of how we do it. So to Don's point, we're not going to have a separate vote because we're not raising the millage rate next year necessarily. But if we don't have a separate ordinance, we will. We'll have to raise a .15 just to make up for this. Because we have zero increase this year, we would need a .15 next year.
Or we have offsets, we have to have offsets.
We have a zero increase in the manager's budget, we have a separate item that's going to the open space fund, that's everyone knows about, it's going to be on the, on the tax bills as a separate item. So everybody knows exactly what they're paying for open space. It's not going to be hidden agenda.
No, no, it's not, no, it's not. But I guess we're just trying to make the point that next year, the Charter only requires one ordinance to set the millage rate.
I mean, next year, the Commissioners ought to be intelligent enough to know that if we don't need this money, if they're not that intelligent, we shouldn't have to help them this much.
You know, I object, you know, Bill, calm down. I think, Bill, you're getting upset here. Just relax, pal.
We're not.
And it's not a matter of intelligence. This is a matter of how government works. Government in general will try to obfuscate, will try to confuse, will overload the public and the Board of Commissioners with mindless, mind-numbing mounds of data so as to obscure the true meaning.
Are you accusing our staff of that?
I'm accusing every government, and that's how government works. Now, what the issue here is, is that this will surely be built into the base every year going forward and will never come back for review. Don's point is absolutely right. This is for one year, it should term, it should sunset, and it shouldn't have to be reauthorized every year. And if it's not necessary because the open space fund has enough to cover it, because maybe people raise money, Ms. Morgan or the Conservancy, whoever, and there's money there, then we should not reauthorize it. So it never should become part of our base budget.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there an amendment that someone would like to make?
I have another comment.
Point of order. I had, I mean, I was speaking.
Were you finished, Don?
And I wasn't finished. Okay. So, Bill, I never really got an answer from the staff opinion. Does this, will this be revisited every year, or will it just next year, it'll be one ordinance with the combined millage? Because clearly, three of us think that we need to have two distinct votes on this for the life of this activity. Correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Don, I make personal commitment to you that if I'm on this Board, when we're doing taxes next year, it'll be a separate item.
Well, let's do it this year, then.
There's nothing to do.
Well, that's what I haven't heard yet.
This only authorizes this for one year.
This sets a millage for 2015.
So next year, in front of us, we're either going to increase the general by this amount, and I'm not going to go along with that. The way we sold this eight years ago, whenever the, you know, the bond issue was passed, was this was always meant to be a separate, unique item, handled that way completely. So I give you my personal commitment.
Well, my, my answer is the same answer, Don. It says 2015. If you want to add a sentence that says, you know, that it comes back every year, I think you're going to have to do that anyway, whether you add that sentence or not. It's setting, in the last whereas clause, it's setting it at .1500 mils for 2015 period.
Yeah.
It's not a general authorization, but, you know, you can add something to this, you know, to specify that it'll be renewed annually or revisited annually, however you want to do that. But I think you're going to do that anyway, just like you do with your general fund millage. Comes up annually, never locked in.
Would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we add, that we add Section 5 to require that the, that this tax levy be revisited annually.
Is there a second?
I will second that and offer a friendly amendment to say that it shall be, instead of revisited annually, it shall need to be, shall sunset and be reauth, need to be reauthorized annually.
All right, that was the spirit of what I wanted to say. That's more accurate than the way I presented it.
Don, I want to ask, Section 1, it states that, that the millage rate needed to repay the open space bond series, blah, 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 subject to annual evaluation of the realty transfer tax revenues and amend by the Board of Commissioners. So it says that it shall be subject to annual evaluation.
Right, but it's not express.
Well, I would argue to simplify what you're trying to do.
Let's just vote on it simply. Let's just look at it every year. I don't care, you know, who cares? You have to do it anyway. Annual reauthorization. If you change that word, I think you've got it. I think you already.
So replace evaluation with reauthorization.
That'll do it.
Section 1, I move to replace the word evaluation with reauthorization in Section 1.
Second.
Well, wait, we have two motions, so we have a point of order.
No, we can have another one, but we're going to vote mine first.
All right, and just, John Fisher, is it your opinion that if you add that language that you just presented, what I said is not necessary?
I feel that way, yes.
Okay, I think that that makes sense also.
I'd like to clarify, you're just changing annual evaluation to reevaluation?
Reauthorization.
Reauthorization.
I think you also have to, I think you also have to explicitly state that the amount that's authorized here sunsets, it terminates, it no longer, you can reauthorize it, but it doesn't take this away. So I think that this .15 is for one year only, and it shall cease to be an authorized increase in budget, in addition to being reauthorized the following year. I think you need both.
John Fisher, did you get a second to yours?
I did, yeah.
Yes, I said.
Okay, are you making another motion?
No, I'm discussing.
Rich, I don't agree, because we have a fiduciary responsibility every year to set a millage rate. It has to be reevaluated, it has to be reauthorized. We're changing the word here to say reauthorized. I'm satisfied. There's no way this bond is getting paid unless this Board puts the money forward to pay.
And so this will have to be, just that subtle change will mean that this process has to be two votes until a Board decides to make it one.
Okay.
The default scenario is two votes at this point.
I don't think it does. I think it needs to say, this shall terminate and then need to be reauthorized.
Okay, would you like to make a motion to that end? Are you making a motion?
I'll pull.
I'll move, I'll move that we.
Well, let's get our motions out first.
Well, we have two motions.
Two motions right now, so.
No, no, actually, we have three motions. We have the original ordinance, we have Don's motion, and then we have John's motion. John will go now, unless you have a third one. and then we have John's motion. John will go now unless you have a third one that you're concocting up right now.
Yes, I'm concocting. How about I'm thoughtfully drafting on the fly language that would be appropriate under the given circumstances? So, subject to sunset and annual reauthorization. So I would add, I would move that we add the words, "subject to sunset" and annual reauthorization so that the Section 1 would read that the electoral millage rate needed to repay the Open Space Bonds Series 2014 is set at .1500 mills, subject to sunset and annual reauthorization of the re, realty transfer tax revenues and amendment by the Board of Commissioners as necessary to ensure enough funds are generated for repayment of Open Space Bonds Series 2014.
Is there a second? Okay, that motion fails for lack of, excuse me, for lack of a second. Onto the motion put forward by John Fisher. Is there any other comment, or staff comment, or public comment?
Madam President?
Yes.
Just for a point of reference here, once the board decides to borrow money here, you're on the hook for 30 years. There's no deciding, well, we don't like it or that. You've bought this for 30 years.
They want to adjust the ability to pay the real estate transfer increases for some reason.
We got it.
You're going to have to pay for this 30 years. You're going to have to, there's no revote of this every year to decide whether you're going to fund this or not. This is permanent, every year, this stays on.
Thank you, we get that.
The issue is whether they want-
Okay, because what I'm getting here is, we're not getting that, because if you voted yes-
Six of us, six of us understand that for sure.
Okay, because I'm, because what I'm getting-
And I'm not going to say who the seventh is.
Okay.
And maybe me.
Okay, public comment now?
All we're saying, all they're saying is if there's, if they're flush in the real estate and the Open Space Fund enough to pay for it, they might not pay those taxes if they have enough money, that's all.
And also, I want, I mean, I just think that this vote needs to be, come out every year. I think this, if it takes 15 years, you know, before we repay it, I think every year for 15 years, they have to vote for it.
I'm good.
Okay, public comment?
Hi, my suggestion is that I think your constituents would like it separated out. Now, whether that requires a separate vote, similar to the sewer tax or what we call the sewer fee, we want to know. Secondarily, one of the events that could happen besides private fundraising, which really wouldn't affect this, that was something I thought of for the trails, is that we are entertaining, and I think we are trying to sell certain sites that are not purposeful for open space, such as something near the Wawa in Burnmore. That could be used to pay down this debt early. You know, I think that people need to see a careful, sort of separate budgeted-out Open Space Fund. I think that that is realistic and not extraordinary to ask for. And the other thing is, I'd like to know where the marketing of some of the unpurposeful Open Space, if you'd like to talk a little bit about that tonight, I'd love to get at some point. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes, Dan Sherry, Wayne. Let me first start off by saying that I appreciate what Commissioner Booker was stating about the necessity to clarify further. If anything, demonstrated by how the solicitor apparently reads the charter regarding executive sessions, the more specificity into anything you do, the better. I would again state that the charter is overwhelmingly specific as to when you can go into executive session, but because apparently there is some belief that there is nuance to that, any time both a sunset clause as well as a reauthorization clause can be put in, in terms of the language, less likely that there will be mischief. Another comment that I'd like to make, this came up at the last meeting when funding for Ardrossen was discussed. Commissioner Booker asked a very direct question regarding what the Conservancy's commitment was to this project. And the response from former, at least I've been told, former Executive Director of the Radnor Conservancy, Elaine Paul Schaefer, was significantly less than six figures. Is there any more of a finite number than just significantly less than six figures? In terms of the Radnor Conservancy's commitment to Ardrossen, financial commitment? Does anybody on this board know?
I think Elaine, as I understood at last meeting, said that it was actually a subgroup, a separate nonprofit that was raising money, and that its largest contributor was the Conservancy, and that in total, they had pledges to something like $100,000.
So the Conservancy has pledged approximately $100,000, is that accurate?
No, it's under $100,000.
Yeah, some portion, under, under $100,000.
Well, under, under $100,000 could be 50 cents.
Point of order, well, this has nothing to do with the motion before us.
Conservancy was brought, well, by the way, the person raising the point of order is himself a former Executive Director of the Radnor Conservancy.
And we applaud him for that.
Point of order, what's the bearing? What does that do with the matter before us?
Thank you for the comment for explanation.
Somebody shoot.
Excuse me? Point of order, what was that? Point of order, what was that? That did not get a rebuke from the chair. That did not get a rebuke from the chair.
Mr. Sherry, why don't you finish up? You've got five minutes.
That's not the parliamentarian who's now telling me to finish up, that's John Rice. There's no camera on my face right now, but I heard the word "shoot" regarding John Nagel directing a comment to me. And since there was this weepy speech given by Commissioner Schaefer at the beginning of the meeting about the five-minute rule, I have another comment that appeared to be completely out of order by John Nagel, no rebuke from the chair. So, since I don't know whether-
Mr. Sherry, I have no idea what you're talking about. I didn't hear a comment. I apologize I didn't hear it, but I didn't hear it.
Okay, well then, that, okay. Somebody from the audience indicated that she heard it. Anyhow, let's just, I had a question pending at the time, which was, "It is less than $100,000." Could you be more specific in terms of less than $100,000? Otherwise, I'll just have to do other rudimentary calculations here.
Mr. Sherry, can you keep your comments on the language of our ordinance? That's what we're passing right now.
Oh, this goes to funding of Ardrossen, goes to funding of Ardrossen.
We're passing an amendment about the language of our ordinance.
Here's just some quick math regarding the Radnor Conservancy. The Radnor Conservancy has been in existence since at least 2004.
This is not the issue we're talking about.
They claim to have 300 members. Now, for the past 10 years, the Radnor Conservancy has not focused truly on anything other than Ardrossen. So let's take just an average monthly contribution that people would give to a, say, an open space environmental nonprofit.
Mr. Sherry, could you please direct your comments to the amendment at hand?
No, this goes to, this goes to funding. This goes to funding. So, if it was, let's use an example and say that they were contributing with their 300 members $15 a month. That's similar to what people give to Greenpeace. That would be $180 per year for each of the members over the past 10 years. That results in $540,000. That's just by going what people give to Greenpeace, approximately $15 a month. And yet, the Radnor Conservancy, after pushing Ardrossen and pushing Ardrossen and pushing Ardrossen, is apparently offering a financial commitment, the specifics of which are unknown, but it is less than $100,000? That's what this group has been pitching for a decade and now comes before this board saying that, oh, whatever it is, it's less than $100,000, and we don't want to address that. So apparently, neither Commissioner Schaefer or Commissioner Nagel would like to address this, but I would like to, again, commend Commissioner Booker for bringing it forward because that group has pushed candidates and pushed ideas about buying Ardrossen and funding Ardrossen, and now, when the times come to pay the bill, well, what to say about the Radnor Conservancy? They may be party-hardy, they might not get a lot of initiatives passed, but at least when it comes to their own money, they're frugal.
Would you look at me, Mr. Sherry? Would you look at me, please, Mr. Sherry?
You're not the parliamentarian, I'm not the prior.
I have a point, I have a point of order. His five minutes, he has exceeded his five minutes, he's finished.
He's finished. So now, the parliamentarian is actually not Elaine Paul Schaefer, who's announced at the beginning of this meeting.
Mr. Sherry, your five minutes are up. Could you please wrap up?
Okay, well, I'll wrap up. Thank you for that.
You did interrupt him, by the way.
I think we are entitled to-
It's hard to say that you're limited to five minutes if you're going to take some of his time.
Mr. Sherry, could you please wrap up?
Certainly. So again, I would just again ask, perhaps somebody on this board could ask a member of the staff, after I step down from the lectern, what the Radnor Conservancy's financial commitment is to Ardrossen? Because stating it's less than $100,000 gives no material information other than the fact that even if it was the full 100 grand, it's ridiculous in terms of how little they've contributed. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Okay, so the motion on the floor is John Fisher's motion to add the word "reauthorization" into Section 1. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes seven to nothing. Now we move on to Don Curley. Would you like to withdraw your motion?
No, I'm going to stay with it. Just, I think there's enough specificity with it that I think it's worth adding. So in sum, it would be something to the effect that the provision will sunset after 2015 and require reauthorization to continue.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Well, you're, no, he had a second.
That has, that's the spirit of what he said.
That's a second. And I would say that I think that this is a necessary component and further that the Conservancy really has come up short on this. You know, it's easy to say you want to do something, especially when you're using taxpayer dollars.
What does that have to do with the matter before this board?
This is, this is funding of this board.
It has nothing to do with the motion in front of us.
Well, the Conservancy was pledged, they were going to put money up for this, and what are they doing? They are, they are putting in a paltry sum, and they're putting it all on the taxpayers. And the taxpayers didn't want to have this.
You have no idea what they're doing, Rich.
I do have an idea, based on what we have right here.
Anyway, let's try and get this discussion back about the amendment at hand. We have Don's amendment on the floor. Is there any discussion about that amendment?
I just state that the pursuant to the charter, the Board of Commissioners is required to set millage rate annually to fully fund the government, and that includes all debt funding. So regardless of what we put in here, we're going to revoke this every year, whether it's part of a single ordinance or not.
Well, it's not, Don, because it's just a bucket. The first bucket is we will pay the debt service. What could happen is we don't fund, something else runs short at the end.
I feel it's redundant, that's all.
Anyone else? Any staff member, any public comment?
I'm busy tonight, I'm sorry. I do have to say that, I don't know Dan Sherry well, but, and I don't always understand what he's saying, but I do understand when a good deal is a good deal. And what it has to do with your motion, in my opinion, is that in typical deals, 20% would have been raised privately, and I can show that to you, any of you, if you want to contact me. I have case study after case study, I've even reached out to California. So it does have something to do, because maybe we wouldn't be looking with funding a fit, is it .015 or .15, you guys, the millage rate?
.15 mills.
.15. Maybe it would be .07. There would be more of a shared community. And so I think that it does have something to do with it. And I think that if anybody would like to see my case studies, I'd be glad to share them with you. I've collected them over the last year and a half. And this really is an unusual, in fact, the only one I could find, that people haven't given. And maybe that doesn't say it's a bad deal. Maybe it's because they're like, "What the heck, we are all paying anyways." But I think in the future, you might want to rethink the structure of how you came about this. That's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other public comment? All right, now we are voting on Don Curley's motion that included the sunset provision as well as the revisiting annual, annually. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Opposed.
Motion fails by a vote of two to five. Now we are voting on the underlying ordinance. Is there any, which was, I believe, I'm not sure who put it for.
I made the motion.
Bill made the motion. Is there any public, or, excuse me, commissioner comment about that?
I'd like to say something. I haven't said anything yet. I certainly respect Don and Rich's and John's interest and desire to make sure that we do this properly and that it's reevaluated each year. If it's not back before us, and I'm on this board 12 months from now, or 11 months from now, I'll be asking questions as to where it is. So I feel very comfortable that, as one member of the board, I will want and be taking a position that we must reauthorize this in a year. I'm a little bit wondering if maybe there's going to come a time when we get on board with the acquisition of the 71.33 acres in, at Ardrossen, that we don't use every opportunity that comes before us in the way of a motion or a resolution or a discussion point to rehash the wisdom of making the acquisition. I think we made that acquisition by ordinance last December 16th. We had, I think we had four votes then, four, it was a four to three vote. I would hope that the three commissioners that dissented then, Rich, you were not with us then, but when these issues come up again, that you'll decide that this is a policy of the government of Radnor and our Board of Commissioners, and you'll get behind it. And we won't endlessly debate and beat up on this issue. I'm very, I don't, nobody ever likes to vote for a tax increase, and this is a tax increase. But in this case, I don't have any compunction about doing it. I fully supported the acquisition of the 71.33 acres. When I ran for this office, I took a position that I was going to support it and vote for it if it came up, if our finances warranted it. And I made that evaluation throughout 2012 and 2013, that our finances have improved and that it is a wise purchase to make. It's wise in the sense that it preserves in perpetuity a priceless piece of real estate within our township that we can enjoy and our children can enjoy. And I thank John Fisher that our financial situation is much better than it was when you first ran in 2007. Your votes have been part of that reason why it's better, so have the votes of the other commissioners and the work of our staff and Carfac. So I don't have any problem in answering or defending my vote on this. I don't think it's rash of us to continue with the process here. And as our township manager says, we're, we've issued, authorized the issuance of bonds, and so now, we have to find a way to pay the debt service on that, whether it's from our real estate, our Open Space Parks and Open Space Fund, or whether it's replenishment of that fund by the Real Estate Transfer Tax, or whether it's by a levy on general property ownership. So that's all I had to say, but I do hope that we can, again, not beat a dead horse on this issue every time it comes up. And I certainly hope that we can continue to strive to be more civil to one another. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any staff comment? Any public comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
And it passes by a vote of four to three. I would just like to add, before we move to our next resolution, I'm not exactly sure where this discussion of bashing a community in 501(c)(3) came up tonight, but I would like to point out that they are, the Radnor Conservancy is a very well-respected and positive contributor to this community. We appreciate all that they do for our community. They went to extraordinary measures for this project over seven to 10 years, raising money and spending a lot of time and money on organizing workshops with the family, bringing in people from all over the world and the country to advise on what to do and how to work with the family. When that didn't work out, then they spent years of time, energy, and money putting together a referendum effort, because that would be the only way to save the land. And that was years of effort, time, and money. And it is very appreciated by the vast majority of this community.
They also got their candidate elected to be Chair, Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Next, we have Resolution 2014-12.
Okay, I'll move Resolution 2014-121. This is adopting the 2015 salary and wage schedule.
Second.
This resolution includes a 2.75% increase for all un-uniformed police officers effective January 1st. Actually, that's uniform, sorry. And 2.75% for all rate employees, and it also allows for up to 2.75% increases for all part-time and full-time employees at the discretion of the manager pursuant to performance evaluations.
Was there a second?
I seconded.
Any commissioner comments or questions?
Is this part of the collective bargaining agreement, or is this, this is part of the?
Yes, this is pursuant to both the Uniformed Police Officers Agreement, the FOP Agreement, and also the Rate Employees Agreement. So these are contractually required increases. In addition to that, there's a 2.75%, up to 2.75% increase- In addition to that, there's a 2.75%, up to 2.75% increase for all non-union, full-time and part-time employees, but that is subject to performance reviews at the discretion of the Township Manager. I, so I'll just say that I support this ordinance, a resolution, clearly because of the contractual obligations under the contracts, but also giving the manager the discretion to give performance increases and raises based on, on work effort. I also want to point out that Bob Zankowski not only has taken a pay cut this year, but he has also not put in for a pay increase for next year. So Bob, I want to personally thank you. You're showing a lot of leadership that I don't find very common, and, and it's very difficult to see anyone doing this. But your point is well-taken, we appreciate that. And I, I think it means a lot to, to the public, too. It really does. You've worked very hard here for the last four and a half, five years now, and I've said this many times, that we're at a 0% tax increase for operations and capital because of your hard work and all your staff, and without your help, it wouldn't be possible. So, thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I had a couple. Bob or Bill, tell me, why is it that when we get to this, the, it looks like the, the last page that has the itemized salaries, I don't understand why base rate increase has a numeric value in one column and a percentage in the other, but that framework is not carried uniformly throughout the document? Meaning employees count number 31 through 38?
Yeah, so I believe you're referring to the page that is the 2015 wage schedule for the Fraternal Order of Police, so the uniformed officers. What, so there's a dashed line there in between employee, on the count, count column between employee 30 and 31. Employees below, from 31 down are those who are part, those are the newly hired officers. And within the collective bargaining agreement, there are specific steps, salary step-ups that occur at given points of time. So for 2015, each, well, in the collective bargaining agreement itself, each of those steps increase by the amount of the, the overall pay adjustment. So for 15, it's 2.75. So that's why we kept the 2.75 in the one column. The numeric value represents the step increase that they're scheduled to, to receive when they hit their, the effective date. So for all, all of those, there's, all the officers that were hired, I forget the exact date, but there was a group of them, on April 29th to 15th, they will have reached 18 months of service and therefore go to the next category on the pay scale. So that's, that, we wanted to reflect that in here to make sure it was as transparent as possible as to what was going on.
Thank you.
That amount, more or less than the 2.75 would be, in general? Is that less?
More.
Or more?
It includes the 2.75. So what I'm saying is if they would have reached their 18-month anniversary in 14, it would have been 2.75 less than what it's going to be when they reach it in 15.
Okay. My question is, 4,233 is the number that we're showing here, base rate increase for the people below the line, 31. Is that more or less of an, that looks like that's, I can't tell.
It's more than 2.75, yes.
It is more than 2.75.
I'm sorry, yeah, I misunderstood your question. Yes, it is more than just 2.75. But the way the, the collective bargaining agreement works is they come in at a reduced salary, and over a period of five years, it ramp up to what was, what is considered in the contract, a full officer's annual salary. So those officers are working their way up through the schedule.
So, so to the extent that that is more than 2.75, does that reduce everyone else? Right, isn't, isn't 2.75 the cap for every, all the entire group, or is it made up someplace else?
I don't understand your question.
Everyone gets 2.75.
Everyone gets 2.75, and then these people get more than 2.75.
These are step increases due to, due to the contract terms, yep.
Right.
And this, all of this is really in the, in the collective bargaining agreement, and it's just as before us, as a perfunctory authorization?
Oh, it's a matter of, the Township's done this for years, and it's a matter of, again, transparency and, and putting out to the public, you know, where these wages are at.
It wasn't always voted in public, but it has been for about five or six years, yeah.
Any other comment or questions from the board, from staff, from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Wait, I'm going to abstain, because I don't think it's necessary to do this.
Six to one with one, six to zero with one abstention.
I have no further report.
Next, we have Public Works and Engineering, but this item has been removed from the agenda. So, anything else? Commissioner, again?
Well, I'll let the agenda go. I would like to, oh, we don't have our Director of Public Works, so I was going to ask for a report on the North Wayne Field Basin, the Septa Parking Lot Project, the AT&amp;T discussions, and dealings with different Township.
I would suggest that under Old Business, you request that that be put on the agenda, next agenda, an update.
Just a point of, does that need to be, can't that just be addressed and presented to the, I mean, it's like part, part of, part of what I think we, why we get bogged down in late meetings, obviously tonight, that's not the case. But information like that can just be put out. I don't know that it has to be put out at this meeting. You, you just want an update on the status of these projects, right? So I, I don't feel that...
I don't know what you mean by put out. I'd like it delivered in public and have the opportunity of asking questions and having other Commissioners and the public ask questions, that's all.
Okay.
The Sherman Road Bridge is open, right?
Why don't we bring it up during Old Business and make the request? Next, we have Parks and Recreation. Commissioner Nagel?
A couple of quick items for any of you that happened to get to the Willows yesterday for Santa's workshop. There were over 1,000 participants, and then followed up by the fireworks. I watched the fireworks from off-site because the park was full, if you will. It was tremendous. Next Saturday, we start the Santa's Delivery. This is that new program, we started last year. There are 275 participants, which households, that's 60% increase over last year. And there's about 650-some gifts, which is 75% greater than the last year. There's a motorcade that'll start delivering these between 5:30 and 9:00 p.m. Fire trucks and Santa and whatnot. A good time will be had by all. And the Winter and Spring Rec Brochure is available, probably Friday, it'll be online available.
So I just want to reiterate that the, so Saturday night between 6:00 and 9:00, there are going to be sirens going on and on and on. You needn't take cover. It is Santa and his motorcade. Last year, we got a lot of calls, what's going on, what's going on? So tell all your neighbors, it's just Santa. It's not a three-hour emergency. Okay, next, Community Development. Commissioner Curley, do you have anything?
No, nothing to report.
And Library, Commissioner Booker?
Just report that we, as we heard, that there was the 5K run this past weekend, and the contributions and participation was appreciated.
Public Health, Commissioner Nagel?
No report.
Public Safety, Commissioner Spingler?
No report.
Old Business?
Bob, I'll just formalize it now. Could we have a public report next time about the four projects that I mentioned? Sure. Thank you.
Any other Old Business?
Yeah, I wanted to read into the record an email that I sent last week, the day after our board, or two weeks ago after the board meeting. This was addressed from myself to, to Commissioner Booker and copied to the rest of the board, and it states, "Rich, I apologize for my outburst last night. No excuses. I believe it was related to the cold flu I was fighting, which lowered my trigger point, and signed, John Nagel, Commissioner."
Thank you. Any other Old Business?
Thank you.
Any new business?
I have two items. First, I would like staff to look into paperless meetings for the Commissioners. I've been using a tablet now for about six meetings, and I'm finding it much and much easier to use. I'm able to annotate the tablet and, you know, write on it like, even like a kid's toy. I get to highlight the important items, and I get to save all the documents with the annotations. I've also reclaimed part of my dining room. It's been phenomenal. And I really recommend this, because what I understand from staff is that the copying costs are increasing more and more. Not only are we getting two to 300-page packets that Jennifer has to labor over to put together, it's a, it's a tremendous drain on staff time to assemble these paper documents. But we also have to do large format print for the designs, for the Board of Commissioners, for the Planning Commission, and for the Zoning Hearing Board and all these other boards. And quite frankly, I've been able to use, you know, obviously you can zoom in on the drawings and look at any detail you want. You can circle things that are important to you, and you can save all the comments. They're fully bookmarked. I can jump to any section of the meeting at any time. I can search keywords during, in the packet, so if I'm trying to find one specific detail, I can get to it. And I can do most of this during the meeting, so it's not really distracting me. If I need to find a piece of information about a topic, I can find it within seconds. No special skills needed to do this. This is using a, a generic viewer. So I'm going to recommend that staff recommend to the Board of Commissioners options on digitizing our packets. The packets are already digitized, they're already being used in a Dropbox system. Jennifer's been nice enough to send me a link to my Dropbox. With two clicks, those files show up on my tablet. I don't have to download emails, I don't have to do any of this. Just two clicks, they show up in my Dropbox, they're now permanently my files. My tablet is secure. This is far more secure than your paper documents. If someone were to recover this tablet and try to get into it, they can't. So these are secured documents. So there's a lot of reasons for us to do this. I think we will clearly save just on the, on the assembly costs, the printing costs, the full-color printing, all the things we're spending money on. Maybe staff would like to kind of give an, you know, just a back-of-the-envelope assessment of what it really costs to do, to do these paper packets, but I would bet that by the end of the year, it would offset, be completely offset by the cost of a tablet. So, you know, in the end, you know, a one-time purchase of a tablet may last four or five years, and we'll see a savings on staff time, a savings on paper, large amounts of paper. So I, I really want to make sure that we move in this direction, and I, I was willing to be the guinea pig on this. And it, you know, the first meeting was a little rough, but after that, it's gotten so much easier now. I carry this around with me, I can read my packet anytime I want, and I can write comments in it, and I can copy and paste from it and send emails. It's a lot easier than paper. So, if, Bob, if you can just take that on, maybe for the beginning of the year, we'll start discussing that. Come to us with some options.
I like, I like the idea. I, I really, John, it would not eliminate the requirement that we have paper copies for the public, but...
Well, we've addressed that with the kiosk. So now the public is actually only printing what they want, and, and what I'm sensing is a lot of the public are using their smartphones to download the packet. So I think we've seen a big reduction on that paper usage.
There's also proprietary software out there that can manage meetings. It's, they'll give a free tutorial, I can give you the web link to it, but it makes a lot of sense, and it, it can, one of, one of the disadvantages I have with the paper form is if I want to look at a document that is six, from a meeting six months ago, I have a harder time. Based upon what you're describing, I'm assessing you have an easier time, because it's all in one spot. So I'll do my part and find the link to the proprietary companies, and then they'll give a free demo, and you guys can see if you like it.
And, and the way I, the way I view this, we would roll this out with the Board of Commissioners first, and then maybe if we want to try to cut costs, we could do hand-me-downs to the other boards, because we'll, you know, the tablets will have to be replaced. But if it's, if it's worthwhile and saves money, it's probably worthwhile doing it for the Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board. Yeah, that's my first item. So, the second item is the, the question of discussing conditional use orders in executive session. I, I disagree with our solicitor on this issue. I'm not going to say that he's wrong, I just disagree. So, but I think it's important for this board to discuss this issue in public, as to whether or not we're going to discuss conditional use orders in executive or in public. And I think I'd like to not think, I want this on the agenda for the next meeting. And it's not to solve the problems of the past, it's not to, you know, resurrect the past, it's to look forward and think about what we want to be doing in public and what we want to be doing in executive session. I personally would rather do them in public. I understand that may be a touchy subject for, you know, and it may be risky, but the public really wants us to do these things in public and in front of them, and they want to have the benefit of seeing the deliberations. So I'd like that on the next agenda, and that's all I have.
And it also, it wouldn't be just one Commissioner requesting that, it would be at least two, because I'll join in on that. Again, I, I think that the deliberations as to what the conditions for approval of a conditional use are clearly the purview of the, of the public process and, and open meetings, and, and are materials that should be included in public. So I, I agree with Commissioner Fisher.
I'm not so sure I see any harm to deliberating in public and probably some benefit on the matter, the way we did it. I'm going to hold off and say, I mean, we're waiting to hear from our solicitor. I don't see how you can say you disagree with him, but he's not wrong. I mean, for you to say you disagree with him, I think you have to be telling him he's wrong. You can't disagree and have one of you be, both of you be right. So to me, I, I want to hear what our solicitor has. He's going to assemble some information and get it to us, and I want to hear that and see that.
So, Don, I disagree with you, but you're not wrong either.
Is there any other new business?
I'm not even sure how I answer that without a...
Is there any other new business?
I'll just thank you, thank you, yes.
Okay, it's time for public participation.
Hi, Dan Sherry, Wayne. Just would like to bring up that last time I was at the podium, I thought I heard Commissioner Nagel say, directed to me, somebody shoot him. During break...
Excuse me, I make a, we're going to take that seriously, okay?
I appreciate that, Mr. Curley.
And so, we're not going to let that go. We might not air it out right here, but we're going to, we're going to air it out.
I appreciate it. I just want to state very specifically that I went with, with a Radnor resident who's in this room, who was able to bring it up on videotape. That statement is absolutely clearly heard on that videotape.
And just in defense of the President, she did not hear that, or, you know, arguably would have intervened?
I'm not sure I agree with that. I don't think it's possible to not, to have not heard it. I've also checked with a person seated all the way in the back who heard it, clear as day. So for Elaine Paul Schaefer to look at me, to use a quote from Jim Higgins, look at me and say, "Mr. Sherry, I apologize, I have no idea what you're talking about," that will not fly with me. That being said, the other reason why I wanted to come up and, and talk tonight is for the second issue that I outlined in my letter, and that is the conduct of the Radnor Township Solicitor regarding the investigation by the Ethics Board and subsequent appeal of the matter involving Commissioner Jim Higgins. As I pointed out in my letter to this board, it is mandated by the code that the legal representative for the Ethics Board be the Township Solicitor. Solicitor Rice acknowledged for the first time publicly at the November 10th, 2014 Board of Commissioners meeting, that he had recused himself from the Ethics Board's investigation of Jim Higgins. He would not answer my question, but he answered Commissioner Booker's question, who asked him that question specifically. Did you recuse yourself? His response, I'll quote it. "Yes, I did, I did, I did recuse myself." I then asked, "You recuse yourself?" Solicitor Rice, "Yes." I then said, "Was that announced to the Board of Commissioners?" Solicitor Rice retorted, "No, and it doesn't have to be." And then he further elaborated. "Rules of professional conduct have rules with representation, and I recused myself, and it was an obvious potential conflict. Read the rules, Mr. Sherry." In my letter to you all, talk about Pennsylvania Rules of Professional Conduct pursuant to John Rice's invitation, specifically comment number nine to Rule 1.3 diligence. If a lawyer has served a client over a substantial period in a variety of matters, the client some... sometimes may assume that the lawyer will continue to serve on a continuing basis until the lawyer gives notice of withdrawal. Doubt about whether a client-lawyer relationship still exists should be clarified by the lawyer, preferably in writing, so that the client will not mistakenly suppose the lawyer is looking after the client's affairs when the lawyer has ceased to do so." And I brought that up, consistent with John Rice's assertion that he did not have to tell you that he recused. Now, subsequent to that meeting, John Rice entered his appearance, entered his appearance in the appeal that Dr. Donato has taken against the Radnor Township Ethics Board. Okay, again, this is not months after, not years after he made that "I recuse myself" statement, this is nine days later. I attached to my letter the actual entry of appearance that John Rice filed in the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas, nine days after he said, "I recuse myself due to a potential," no, excuse me, "to an obvious potential conflict." Okay? So, in my letter, I asked you all to figure out why that was occurring, because goodness, at least to my eyes, that seems indefensible. Subsequent to sending the letter, I learned through a newspaper article that not only has John Rice entered his appearance, he's actually filed what we would call a dispositive motion, trying to have that complaint, or, excuse me, the appeal of the complaint thrown out. So, while it is generally not the practice of this board to ask direct questions about representation in public meetings, I would just respectfully request that this board have John Rice explain himself to you all. You don't want a situation where an attorney who has publicly stated that he has a conflict and has recused himself, to be filing motions and making statements in subsequent litigation. It could get extremely messy. The approach is, when one recuses themselves, and this is just straightforward stuff, this isn't a complex analysis, once the solicitor declares that he's out because of a recusal, this board then votes to authorize, should it desire, outside counsel to be brought in because of the conflict to the solicitor, because of the self-admitted conflict to the solicitor, because of the self-admitted conflict that the solicitor himself has stated was a basis for recusal. It's very silly to be going along this particular...
Mr. Sherry, it's been seven minutes.
I'm sorry, I must confess. You were saying something, I apologize. I just didn't hear that.
Said, "Excuse me, Mr. Sherry, it's been six minutes."
I was being sarcastic. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Any other public comment? All right, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Will we adjourn?
All those in favor?
Second.
Aye.
We're adjourned.